Good morning. It's Wednesday, August 3rd at 7:00 a.m. here in the WCA Secondary School Media Center. I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order, and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our mission statement is to challenge and support our students, staff, and families in each person's growth as an engaged learner and successful citizen of our community. I'm going to move into roll call, starting with Christensen.
Here.
Gross.
Here.
Nessman's here. Sibolic.
Here.
Strunk is not with us yet. Okay. And Ulrich. Okay. We'll move on to our agenda. I don't believe there's any modifications to today's agenda. Any additions or requests for correction from the board? Seeing as none, I'll ask for a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Is the... A second?
Second.
Roll call vote, starting with Christensen.
Yes.
Nessman. Is a yes. Gross.
Yes.
Sibolic.
Yes.
Strunk.
Yes.
And Ulrich. And we will also reflect in the minutes that Strunk is... has joined the meeting as of 7:02. And I don't believe we have any visitors that would like to comment at today's meeting. We do not have any committee or curriculum activity reports. We're going to move on to administrative reports, starting with Mr. McNamara.
I believe or not, I actually sent one yesterday. But I have the couple of small things. The ECF, which is our... the activity funds that are coming from the government. We have not heard anything back from them yet. One of the key points that will be additional Chromebooks for the elementary students, specifically Grade 3 right now, where we have about 50 more students in Grade 3 that we have Chromebooks for them. But as long as this comes through, it will be perfectly fine. And I just saw a new... or update yesterday that the federal government has increased the funds limit for that because of the needs across the nation. So I'm confident that will come through, just not 100% sure when. Couple of new things, just to touch on. We have crisis go with this new application for our lockdown and emergency plan. It'll kind of pull everything together. It's a great opportunity where teachers and staff on any device can check students in when we're in lockdown. It also has a great piece that pulls together our reunification plan, pulling directly from our students, our student information system. And it allows us to keep perfect records of who picked up what students when. Couple of other things we have going on. Knowable for is a new program we're going to be using with staff to do more training on cybersecurity, and more specifically for our staff, how to make sure that they're able to identify spam emails and phishing emails. It's been a huge increase, starting well in spring of last year. So this will be very beneficial to all of our staff and to our network security. I3 Education, it's pay school, school pay. We're transitioning to school pay. We've talked about that before. We are also joining with I3 Education, Quick Lunch will be replacing Meals Plus. Meals Plus decided that they're no longer going to host their data with Region 1, so we had to make the decision whether we're going to go with their new program, which is called Titan, or if we're going to go with the other recommendation, which was Quick Lunch. Quick Lunch works directly with our payment system, so they'll integrate. They're owned by the same parent company. So we decided to go with them, and we're off to a great start so far. Along with that program, there's a program called Quick Apps. Quick Apps gives us that digital free and reduced application that we were looking for before. So I'm hoping by the middle of this month, that will be up and running and available to all of our families. We're also adding some charging stations to this building for our Chromebooks. So they're going to be located strategically throughout the building, one in the media center, one down by the Fayette hallway, one over by the music hallway, and a couple in the classroom wings. So students have a spot to charge their Chromebooks when they're not using them. My goal, coming out of last year, we had tons of students who misplaced chargers. My goal is for students to not have to bring their charger to school anymore, and to have specific charging locations where they can charge their Chromebooks securely and not have to worry about pulling around their Chromebook charger, borrowing somebody else's charger, all those pieces. So to simplify things. And then just elementary ag program. I know we've mentioned this a long time ago, but I just wanted to give a huge thank you to Eric Swatsky, Austin Handsome, Marine Vis, Amy Swenson, and Natalie Crasch for giving the green light for it. We're expanding the ag programming into the elementaries and into the middle school. Probably in February or so, I went to Mr. Swatsky and I just said, "Look at all these great things we're doing for industrial technology in the elementaries with our 3D printing, with our COVID, with all these other pieces." That these kids are now coming to Mr. Crasch with these home skills. So he's not starting from ground zero. He's starting with a skill set. And Mr. Swatsky mentioned that his ag programming starts in 9th grade. And I said, "Well, what can we do to try and fix that?" Through lots of hard work from him and looking through pieces, we settled upon some hydroponic systems that would be pretty small, self-contained, but could go into our elementary programs and really start building our ag programming, just like we've been building our industrial technology program. And so I've been working with him on just finding the right equipment for it. But yesterday, he had Austin Handsome, Marine Vis, and Amy Swenson here with some ag educators in Minnesota, working through how to integrate ag education into all of their curriculum areas. And they were here for quite a while yesterday, and he found funding for that and everything. So he's doing a phenomenal job of taking that ag education program that he's doing there and streamlining it and bringing it down into the elementaries. Just how important ag is to our community. I think that the earlier our kids can get exposed to those pieces. And you know, this whole idea popped into my head when my middle child came home with the Dixie cup and the little flower coming out of it, and I said, "It's cool, but wouldn't it be awesome if these kids were like actually harvesting food like we're going to be doing out of the greenhouse?" So with these hydroponic systems, that we... every week, our 4th graders are going to be able to harvest produce and go through those processes and start learning those pieces. And Mr. Swatsky's ideal for the whole thing is to eventually have the high schoolers who are doing it on a larger scale come down to our elementaries and try and work with them on what they're doing and kind of get them prepared for that next level. So I'm really excited for where it's going to go, but I just wanted to recognize those people for the time that they put into it. Time Tracker. So Time Clock Plus is what we use for our time in, time out, clocking in, vacation requests, all those pieces. It is no longer going to be hosted by Region 1, which means Region 1 would not be able to provide us any support on it. However, they came up with a new program that was built by the collaboration of regions in Minnesota that works specifically with our smart finance and smart VR programming that we use. And it's called Time Tracker. So it's available now. However, if we tried making the changeover now, we would be making that changeover right about September 1st, and it would be rolled right into the chaos at the beginning of the year, and I'm not 100% sure it would go very well. So we had a discussion. We're going to start that rollover in October with a small group of staff to make sure that we have everything figured out and ready to go. And then, starting November 1st, we'll be rolling the rest of our staff into Time Tracker and away from Time Clock Plus. So until then, our staff will use Time Clock Plus as we have in the past. The advantage we have with going to Time Tracker is cost will be very similar, where Time Clock Plus will have an increased cost because it's going cloud-based. Time Tracker will be about the same cost as what we've been paying, plus we're going to continue to have that Region 1 support, which is worth its weight in gold. So that is huge. And then, as always, I just wanted to highlight how incredibly important Stacy Disman is to our district. Our technology department would not function without her. She is the reason why all of our devices work so well and that they're all getting to the right spots and they're ready to go. Helps us start every school year with a lot of success. So when you see her, please make sure that you express your gratitude for the time, effort, and everything she does inside. That's all.
Thank you. Mrs. Dotz, welcome to the table. Do you want to give us a community ed update?
Yes. All right. So a couple of summer things. We did two swimming lesson sessions this year, the last one wrapping up this week, so August 1st through 5th, with many of the sections full this time around. There was good turnout for golf and football camp last week. And then this week, we had wrestling camp with Mr. Gruco and volleyball camp with Sarah Nelson. I put August firearm safety class. The registration is now posted, so that's a little change from my report. And the class is starting August 15th, so that's on the community ed Facebook page. And another change is there is now no cost. Douglas Machines is helping with that cost. So anyone that signs up will not have to pay anything for that. And then we are gearing up for fall and starting to plan. So if anyone has a class idea or wants to teach a class, they're going to reach out to me for that. Last day of summer care at North is going to be August 19th. Just want to thank all the staff that we have showing up every day for the kids to provide this much-needed service to our district. And then I put in there, I talked with Mr. Brownlow and looked at our current childcare rates and then our cost and comparable rates, daycares around the area. And so I put a proposal in there for your guys' consideration and approval. We didn't have a change the past two years now. So we're proposing going up to 155 for all week, no preschool, 140 for the... if they are going to wrap around and a 3-year-old program, 100 for the 4-year-old program, and then still having that family savings of $30, and then keeping the before-school care of $5 and the after-school care of $5 rate there. Wraparound care with Megan Holmes is full, and we do have a huge waiting list for after-school care at North as well. And then, last thing, preschool registrations were started in the spring by Naomi, and we're continuing to advertise for this. Right now, we have, and I didn't separate the numbers by sections per se, just the total amount. For North 4-Year-Old Kindergarten Connection, we have 23 registrations. North 3-Year-Old Little Knights is 13. South 4-Year-Old Kindergarten Connection is 11. And South 3-Year-Old Little Knights is 10. So we're encouraging families to reach out to the offices at North and South if they're still wanting to register, and that's still open online as well. Any questions?
Thank you. Mr. Foslin, do you have an activities update for us?
I have a short report here this month. We have all coaches meetings scheduled for next Monday at 5:00 p.m. With the WCA Player Parental Sport Meeting next Monday at 7:30 p.m. Ball sport practices begin on 15th. And then in my report, you'll see a list of the ball coaches. Now, we do have a few openings up. We have... we have a bit of fill for this ball. That's my report.
No questions? We'll move on. Mr. Brownlow, did you want to give a buildings and grounds update?
Yeah, I talked to Chad. Well, we've been in conversation the last couple of days, and we'll meet tomorrow, actually, review all three buildings to see where pieces are at. I know Diane and I sat down yesterday to make sure that things were incorporated into the budget as we have some pieces at North that need to be taken care of with the boiler room. But they've got all the buildings getting ready to go. We'll do some final things that they've not been able to do in the past to get things ready to go. I know the wall separation pieces are still something that will add a challenge there, I think, to make some spaces, more spaces down itself. It's my understanding, or maybe that's at North. North, I think they're looking to do that. So like I said, I'll get a better handle of that when we go through and do those building walkthroughs and things like that. So I know that he's been looking at some other pieces that need to be taken care of. I believe it's the loading dock in the back of the secondary school here. I think getting some concrete back there, kind of tying in with the greenhouse piece there, getting that taken care of, but remembering that we have limited funding as well, since a lot of those dollars are already spoken for with our long-term facilities maintenance. So that'll be our other piece, too, just to review, to make sure that everything can be covered and that we're taking care of all three buildings there as well. So we'll continue to work forward on that. So the business manager, when I start sharing things that I'm hearing from our department heads, that she's not surprised on some of those pieces. So we did that yesterday to make sure that everything was incorporated there, because you want a happy business manager. That's one thing I've learned in all my years, is have a happy business manager. Right, Diane? So that's all I have to report from what Chad and I have discussed thus far.
Very good. Comments or questions? Mrs. Bash, do you want to give us an elementary update?
Sure. At this time, we are fully staffed teacher-wise, so it's great news. We are still looking to prepare for freshman, which actually we're here today, so we're going to let some young candidates fill those jobs. We're always in the wrong, so we actually got 20 students yesterday and 30 students today. So we're growing and growing, which is good news. Our office is open August 8th. If parents have any questions, Tony and Sheri will be in the offices and they can answer any questions. By the time, of course, it's been really a long lecture to move over this way, too. We are... I sent our letters for teacher assignments, early entrance conferences. Those will come out in about two weeks. And just as everyone else has mentioned, too, we show up to our staff who's been working all summer. The custodial staff's been doing a wonderful job. Sounds like the white wax everywhere you go, but it makes the buildings look nice, and they've been doing a wonderful job getting it going, and especially in this humidity and everything. I... they're doing a great job. Can't see them from over there. Any questions?
Mrs. Allen, welcome to you, too. Do you want to give us a high school update?
Yeah. First, I'd like to just thank everyone for this first month at WCA. Everyone's been very welcoming, and I have lots of questions, but it's been so great to answer them. I've learned lots. I still have lots to learn, but it's been great. Just a couple of things. We met a little bit on the back-to-school workshops, and it looks like everything is set for those three days. And I'm really excited about that day that we all go to Morris. Not only the teachers, but the whole staff goes over there, and they've got great things planned. As Natalie mentioned, we're also going to be doing those early entrance conferences on those first two days. And I think it's such a great idea that parents don't all have to come in on one three-hour session of an open house, and then they sometimes don't get those questions answered. I've been involved in the chaos of the three-hour open house. I love this idea that you guys do here at WCA, what we do at WCA. And probably the biggest thing in this first month that I've been is the staffing changes. We still have three teaching... two teaching, one middle school counselor position open here at the secondary. We have some great things in the works, some strong leads of people for those positions, but there is just not a lot of applications coming in, like little to none for some of the positions. So we really are going to need to be creative in the next couple of weeks to make sure, because as I talked with Paul, we don't just want to put anyone in front of our kids. We want to know that this is a strong person to sit in front of the kids and be able to help them. So we've been working hard on that, and I'm confident that we will have people there on the first day of school. So once again, thank you everyone for what you've done.
Very good. Thank you. Business Manager Powers, do you want to give us a business office update?
Just a little question. MDD committed the launch in November FY '21 to four grant expenses for this... all the districts in the state. And we were looking to make sure that the expenditures follow the grant requirements and everything we receive, and we are to point, and that's always the news. The audit for last year's schedule was the week of September 26th. I believe that they're planning a new house, two to three days, and they already sent all of those things we can upload to them to help... and we started doing the activity process started. Title 1, 2, and 4, those grants for FY '23, this creates a finally good release, will receive $145,000... excuse me, $12.66 in the Title 1款 for this year. That's up $2,070 to the rest two, which is good news, because they have to get a significantly bigger less. Title 2 involves $23,453, that's also about $8,000 to the rest two. Title 4 stays the same, $2,000. That seems to be the general... everybody in the state is $10,000. And we received notice in June that we will not receive BPK funding for this school. Unless they allow me to explain, we may use the application, maybe we'll exonerate them. But right now, we won't be giving them. I think we just... that's all we have.
And can you give the impact of when we don't receive that BPK funding? Because you provide preschool at no charge, so that's a significant piece on the budget that we're reviewing here as well.
Historically, it's been about $80,000 within reality that we can pick up. So we're going to... it's pretty good.
Very good. Mr. Brownlow, do you want to give a superintendent update?
Sure. So Palmer will be here with their representatives next board meeting to approve that agreement that we'll have with them. Now, that does follow some procedures that are set by the state under the contract bidding law, but my understanding, and Diane, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we went into a two-year agreement with the option to extend for an additional two years. There's just a couple of questions that I want to review with them before they come to the meeting to present. One of those is if we don't have school, you know, it looks like we're still paying. And I'm okay if they're paying their staff, where I do have a little bit of a challenge or struggle is if their fuel costs maybe shouldn't be included in that. If they have direct expenses, I get that, but just because the school district receives 2% doesn't always mean that everybody else gets that flow through, because their increase is at 2%. If we could keep it all the same way as what the state's giving, then I'm perfectly fine with that. But I'll review that with them before the August 17th presentation that they come in and will need approval for that. School board election, those... the filing for candidacy opened yesterday, and it'll go through Tuesday, the 16th, and that'll be 5 o'clock. And so Diane will be here, because those do need to be notarized as they come in. So the office will be open to take those. We do have three seats that are up for election there. Staffing, as Jessica said, we will make sure we have quality candidates, but we are having to be flexible. I just got off the phone yesterday with Pelsby, and unfortunately, we have a lead on a Fayette teacher who would meet all the qualifications that we would find necessary, but you need to have a bachelor's degree. And that's where the hangup's going to be here. I did ask the young lady on the phone, I said, "Do you have a bachelor's degree?" Because I said, "We could use you," and she goes, "I know where you're going with this." She said, "I'm getting lots of phone calls with superintendents." I said, "We need flexibility. When Ed Postell has 8,200 openings as of Monday, we have a shortage, and so we need to get that figured out." So that's going to be a challenge for us, probably for the next foreseeable future. But we've heard that student teachers can sometimes go into classrooms and be the teacher. But they said, "No, to be the teacher of record, you have to have that bachelor's degree." So, because they no longer do the Community Expert, it's a Tier 1 through 4 license. And so that's where we're struggling. But I also know that we have... here's where I start to get really creative. I know that we have two people on the high school side of the office or the secondary side of the office that both have Fayette degrees. So they might be teachers of record. We'll see what we can do then. So everything's on the table, but the promise to you is it'll be quality instructors that are in front of the kids. But I know one of the other options that we had was not going to be a good option when they're non-renewing folks, but that person even gets a position, too. So we want to be very careful where we move forward, but flexibility is going to be the key. And you know, when you know that there's 8,200 openings, you recognize that that's going to be the challenge. And it's not just teaching staff, and we're talking paraprofessionals, cooks, all those different folks to have them here to move forward. Crisis Response Plan, I've been kind of reviewing this. It sounds like this is maybe a booklet that was a few years ago, but I want to get that updated so our families know how we're going to respond. I know Mr. McNamara has put some things together on how we'll respond to parents, because we recognize each day that parents send their kids to us, to our building, and they expect them to come home every day. And so in light of recent events, you know, with Evolbi and all those pieces, we just want to make sure that we're on top of it. Tina Lindquist, I believe that'll be the emergency manager that I'll work with. We put a lot of time in this in Burndale to make sure that families knew. We would use the Alice. I think you guys use something similar to that. And we'll just make sure that our staff know what's happening, as well as our families, too, so there's no surprises there, you know, that way where reunification would be, because oftentimes what I'm hearing is sometimes parents... I get it. Something happens at that school, you're going to make sure that you're going to be here, right? At that same point, we're trying to account for everybody and get them to a safe location. So we just make... need to make sure that that's communicated out to staff and families. So we'll work on that as we get together as an administrative team here in August. The other one that I didn't have on there was the e-learning plan. I know that that needs to be approved here before we move forward and share with families. And it's already... it looks like that you take advantage of the five e-learning days. You know, if we have snow days, and it seems to be that there's a lot of snow days here because of the distance in the district of the 49 lineal miles, so that makes sense there. The... again, the promise that I'll make to you is that'll be an extension of the learning. So I struggled with it first at Burndale to realize the e-learning days, I wasn't sure if they were real valuable, until I watched a board meeting of WCAs, and one of the board members said, "Well, people are taking jobs, right, that have remote work. That's becoming a bigger, popular piece." And so I think that's our responsibility to show our students how they can transition. That's just one additional piece, that they can do remote work. But you have to find a way to be... using my son as an example, he's not a remote worker. He is allowed to do that within his project manager job if they have bad weather up in Fargo. But he drives his sister crazy. She's one of his roommates, there's a couple other gals that are there, too. And he goes, "I just can't do this." He said, "I'm going to drive. I'll put my four-wheel drive on and get there." Because he said, "I just can't do it," but he didn't have that training beforehand. And he also likes people, so he needs to be in contact with people. But I think it's a responsibility that we have to get kids ready, because we're seeing that offices are not always housing them, right? And now you can get a job anywhere across the nation, doing different facets of work. So those are the things that I have, and like I said, visited with Diane a little bit yesterday. Well, we've been visiting for a while, just to see budget-wise, how we're going to handle that process moving forward, to kind of shore some things up and just making sure that oftentimes when I'm seeing requests coming in, I'm assuming they're already part of an approved budget. And I think that's the piece that we want to make sure that we clearly understand, department heads understand, as we move forward, here's where pieces are. Because the other thing that... and this is all across the state again, not just Burn... or not just West Central area, would be the idea of federal funds are now going to be done, right? All the ESSR money is no longer here, so money that we hey, figured out how to spend will no longer be there. So many districts are looking to fall off that cliff, because we've added positions and things like that. So that'll be the process that we'll work forward to as well, keeping the board fully informed, as well as our staff, too, so they know as we move forward that here's the dollars that we have. I'm very much a person of saying it's one pot of money. So if we spend heavy here, it means we have to drop in other areas there as well, because there's so many... so many dollars that were allocated. We need to be good stewards of those dollars as we move forward, because our constituents are expecting that. And we have some pieces that we need to look at with our buildings and facilities as we look at those pieces, too.
Very good. Comments or questions from the board? Seeing as none, we'll move on to our consent agenda. There's four items for board consideration today. Number one is employee contract for Nikki Dannison. Thank you. Full-time special education paraprofessional at North Elementary, Step 3. Number two is Nicole Bolinsky, special studies teacher at secondary school, BA Step 0. Number three is to approve the resignation of John Whiting, physical education teacher. And number four is to approve the leave of absence for Teresa Modo per the master agreement. Comments or questions from the board?
Did we already approve that leave of absence?
I don't believe so.
No, she said she would. No, I thought her name already came up. I must have her confused with somebody else.
Yeah, then I don't... Jessica, do you want to just touch base so people understand? Nicole Bolinsky's is a Tier 2, so again, hiring quality people. But do you want to kind of give why that's a Tier 2, not a Tier 3 or 4 license?
Yes. And so in order to be in Tier... so she has a 4-year degree, not in teaching, but she is enrolled in a teaching program, so I have the official letter. And then when we apply for the tier, we'll actually do it today if it's approved. Then we just have to include that she's enrolled currently, and she has taken one semester. So she's going to school, which is beneficial. Sometimes we hear Tier 1, and they're like, "I'm just here. I'm going to teach, but I'm not looking to go back to school." Nicole is. She's enrolled in that teaching program, so I think she's going to be great.
Very good. Comments or questions from the board? Seeing as none, I'll ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Is there a second? Roll call vote, starting with Christensen.
Yes.
Gross.
Yes.
Nessman's a yes. Sibolic.
Yes.
Strunk.
Yes.
And Ulrich.
Yes.
Okay. Move on to new business. We have the first reading of the following policies with statutory and recommended changes by MSBA. Policy number 413, harassment and violence. Policy number 527, inform, student use and perking of motor vehicles, patrols, inspections, and searches. Policy number 528, student parental family and marital status discrimination. Policy number 529, staff notification of violent behavior by students. Policy number 530, inform immunization requirements. Any comments or questions from the board regarding the MSBA changes to these policies? Okay. Seeing as it's the first reading, I will not ask for a motion. We'll revisit this at the next board meeting. Number two is to approve the following contract agreements. It would be to approve the 2223 West Central Area School Pay Schools Agreement. Mr. Brownlow, do you care to give just a brief summary?
Sure. Yep. So that's the one that Kevin was talking about getting us moving forward. So that's the one that Kevin was talking about getting us moving forward in that direction so we can pay our school lunches and should simplify that process. And so it looks like I reviewed the contract and it seems to be straightforward, so the recommendation is to approve that contract.
Is that the same one that will be for like sports activities and all that, or will it all tie in together?
Yes, they'll tie in together. So the company itself is called I3 Education. They actually have a parent company, they've got them called I3. But I3 Education is basically both pay schools and school paid. Under school pay is where we'll do, parents will log in, they'll register, do all the registrations that we were doing in our school before and pay for fees right there. That ties in directly with lunch, which is technically under pay schools, but same umbrella. Parents will never necessarily know that there's two different pieces to that. They will only see the school pay side of it. It just also ties in with the lunch piece and with the application piece for pre-graduates.
Any other comments or questions from the board? Seeing as then I'll ask for a motion to approve the 2223 West Central Area School Pay Schools Agreement.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, starting with Christensen?
Yes.
Gross?
Yes.
Nessman's a yes, Sabalik?
Yes.
Strunk?
Yes.
And Ulrich?
Yes.
Okay. We'll move on to our discussion items for today. Number one, school board authorization for school purchases and services. Mr. Brownlow, would you lead the discussion here?
Sure. So I think it's just reminding the board that you are responsible for, of course, all purchases, contracts, and leases that come through. But I think my head concern to make sure that we weren't muddying the waters, either to say everything that comes through or if we have something that needs to be taken care of right away. We don't want to be held up by having to have a special meeting. So the other point that I probably should have clarified is, once you approve the budget, if everything is in that budget, we don't necessarily have to bring that. You're going to see, and I know I talked to Michelle a little bit about even those contracts, if they're already approved. But sometimes it's just good for you to know what's going on there. So sometimes I can be a little over the top on those pieces. So two or three months down the road, if you say, "Please don't continue to have those things on there," completely understood, we can take those off, that's not a problem. But really where the bid law kicks in is at that twenty-five thousand, we are responsible to go out again and look for quotes. But there are certain pieces that we're not going to be able to find quotes either, it can be difficult. One of those pieces right now, I think, is milk and bread. And those pieces there, trying to find other avenues to get those. And the biggest piece is transportation. They'll tell you, "We're willing to provide if you can figure out a way to get it to your location." And so I know last year, I think you had to be creative using Henry's Foods. And so we're hoping to have pieces there in place as well. But it really, the bid law kicks in at twenty-five thousand where you're looking at quotes. The auditors are always going to check that as well, you know, in that piece there. So I don't want to create where there's all kinds of, of extra governing for the board. But like I said, if it's through the, the board or through the approved budget where you recognize that we're saying, "OK, we've got this much money for professional services." So we need to bring in Mission to do some plumbing work. And that's under the, you've already approved twenty-five thousand dollar budget for that. That doesn't need to always come to you, so we're not bringing all those pieces. But I would say if it's a one-time big expense that you should be aware of, that we would bring that to your attention to say, "Hey, we're looking to purchase, maybe it needs to be fencing someplace." I just don't want you to be caught off guard, you know, when you get to an event and somebody, a constituent asks you to say, "Hey, when did this decide, get decided?" Well, it was actually at our board meeting, we took care of it there. But yeah, I don't think we want to break every little tiny thing because I also know that that's what you've hired me for to do, right? To take care of those pieces and monitor that very closely. And Diane does a great job of that as well, so does Ally. But I think it would be some of those bigger pieces. And really what that sets is the threshold, when do you want to be notified if it's a budgetary request or a request outside of the set budget? When you, twenty-five thousand, we're going to have to go out and get quotes anyway, so I think we'd bring that to you. But do you want to lower threshold? You know, and our board in Burn Dale did that because they wanted to make sure that they protected the superintendent to say, "Hey, we're aware of this." So that's why they went with the fifteen thousand. But if you're comfortable staying with where the twenty-five thousand dollar bid meeting law is, and I'm going to keep you posted as we go through as well. Because as you notice, I do a lot of talking and I share everything, so there's not too many things that I keep as, as behind the door or anything like that. But if you're comfortable with that, I think we can just keep it as current state statute and move forward that way. And if at any point you have a concern or question, just, you know, let me know to say, "Hey, how was this decided?" And I either go back and say, "Well, we approved the budget, here was part of the piece under capital outlay." Or "We knew going forward that this was a buildings and grounds piece, so under facilities, we decided to take care of this here." If you're comfortable with that, we could keep it that way.
That makes sense to me, but it's state statute.
As long as we have your commitment as we go through this and learn, you know, there's a lot of transparency, I think that's fine. We want the transparency, as we're building up this budget and we're, we're going to find a neutral spot, right?
Yep, absolutely.
Be a lot of discussion around that.
Which I think is healthy, that conversation, right? That discussion to make sure that, okay, what are the priorities? Because I'm still learning the priorities of the district, because, and each person brings individual pieces to the table to say, "Hey, but we can't forget about this piece." You know, I'm sure some of our music department folks are pretty excited that I'm a music department person, because, you know, that's a priority for me. But I also recognize that reading is a priority, math's a priority, staff's a priority, so it's all those different pieces there too. But yeah, I think we just, and I can push out from MSBA, it's on their website, so you can see what all those different pieces are. Certain pieces, you know, so you can go out for bread quotes, but you have to actually go out for milk bids. And that's because that's all on statute, I know you do that. Transportation also has exact contracts that you're supposed to follow as you go out for transportation. So I'm sure what that comes from is because at one point, transportation contracts were contracts that were really being taken advantage of by contractors. And I still believe there's some pieces there that they do not, that's another area to find a tough place. At least I've talked to colleagues in my prior district that once they have a territory, there's kind of just an agreement that nobody else submits a bid or a quote. Because now you're on their, in their territory. And so that's, that's why they come out now with contracts, right? All of a sudden, things kind of happen. And I want to know for a while, I think a gentleman by the name of Tom Watson was going through and evaluating transportation contracts to say, "While your transportation funding that you actually get, there's still a designated portion of funding." They wrap it all under the general fund, but the MDE could tell you, say, "Here's part of your transportation funding." They were finding out that they were, it was costing them more for their transportation or, you know, budget than they actually have through those contract vendors.
I do, I do think there was a little bit of room, and maybe I'm the minority opinion here, for just that fifteen to twenty-five thousand dollar range where it's a one-time equipment or contract. Something we hadn't anticipated spending money on, that still is underneath that twenty-five thousand dollars, so we're not having to bid for it. But that's, that seems to be that price range or sticker price, whereas board members, I think we get a lot of questions, right? So I think about the football field, having to do all the work that we did out there, the sprinklers, those types of things. That was a, I don't remember the sticker price on it, but big expenditure, which, you know, when you don't have kiddos in a particular sport, sometimes your ears kind of perk up and you go, "You're spending how much?" And then you've got the parents that are all about it and really excited about it. But I just wonder if we shouldn't just look at that one-off, one-time expenditure that's between the fifteen and twenty-five thousand dollar range, that doesn't hit bids, just as a, a level or a threshold that allows us to ensure that, yep, we're aware, we know the details of that project, here's why they did it, type of conversations that are happening at the board table. I don't think that happens often throughout the school year, but sometimes we have a really big boiler project, for example, that there's a lot of moving pieces to it. And it's a, a big expenditure, and I don't think it's a bad idea from a fiscal accountability standpoint to just make sure that we're having those conversations. That's my two cents.
Yeah, I think that, I don't know that that's a, you know, I think that we all kind of talked like that last time. You know, when we talked about it before, it was just a more of an FYI, more than a actual, you know, maybe that's just that open communication that you know that if there's something that comes up, you think that we're going to quit. You know what I mean, that it's going to be?
So food for thought, Mr. Brownlow?
Yes, so I'll bring that recommendation for final agreement then at the August 17th board meeting.
All right, let's move on to number two, corporate sponsors fund.
Corporate sponsors fund, this reminds me of a fund that we used at Burn Dale, it was called the exemplary project fund. And our board, what they did is they designated the, the dollars. And again, you're responsible for the corporate sponsors fund, right? Because those dollars are all donated to the school. So the board still has the authority, overall authority. And really what I got to remind you of, your biggest authority on that, and Jake will actually be reviewing this as well, would be Title IX. And so we need to make sure, even though clubs and groups are donating money, there is still that piece that you have to follow. And I think Jake, we, Jake had something in his file that kind of showed if you do receive money from boosters. So the example that I'll use is, I believe it's Eden Prairie, I think it's Bud Grant's son, used to be the coach there, so Mike Grant was there. And so I don't believe the pay scale is necessarily the same as it was possibly for other positions in the district and things like that. And so what kind of came about was, we're still responsible to ensure that Title IX is being followed, that we're allocating our funds, you know, between male and female or boys and girls' sports in a, in a certain manner and things like that. Now, is it exactly equal? No, it's based on participant and there's many different factors that go into that. So that's your responsibility, you know, to look at that piece as well, but Jake's going to do all the legwork on that. So my recommendation on the corporate sponsors fund is, I told, I think it was Diane or somebody, eventually my life is all going to be in a binder, so I can just see what practice and procedure to follow. It hasn't got there yet, so I got a long ways to go, it's still in piles and stacks and things like that. But getting that so we can say, "Here's the purpose." And I think we found a document from 2012 that Mr. Patty Anderson had put together, kind of saying, "Here's the purpose, here's why we're going out to look for these dollars from our corporate sponsors." I think Jake just told me that we got five new corporate sponsors that have just signed up. And so that's a great piece to, to see that moving forward. I think they want to support our schools and just having that committee of Jake as the activities director. And then kind of did a hierarchy level, then having the high school principal, because I believe that's going to be probably more appropriate, having that person on there. And then our girls and boys sports representatives, fine arts representative, and then that board representative. Now, I will tell you, in my prior district, they wanted that hands-off. So they said, "You come with a recommendation, but you guys put all the work into it, you know what's going to work best in the building, and then you come back to us with a recommendation for the final approval." And so that's what we did in Burn Dale, was that piece there, is just the final recommendation came for approval. I think one of the things that Jake and I talked about a little bit would have been, also capital outlay may have some influence on how some of those things are taken care of. But I think that request, or we can, you know, look for requests, and like Jake said, every year there may not be something coming in. There may need to be a buildup of funds if a large amount is, you know, maybe used the prior year for something that is substantial, that the next year there may need to be some building up of funds. That it's not something that just always needs to be spent, you know, using that money wisely again as it's coming in. So it may take a year off, there might be a bigger expenditure the following year, but making sure that all of our activities and organizations are included in, you know, those funding pieces. But letting that group take care of it, bring the recommendation to the board to move forward there. That would be, you know, I don't want to overcomplicate the process, but I also want to make sure that there's some, some oversight there as well. So that would be my recommendation moving forward there, to let that group bring forth the recommendation with the activities director, the high school principal, I should say, secondary school principal, our boys and girls reps, as well as our fine arts representative there too. And then if you feel like you need a board rep on there, you could definitely do that. But I would think that maybe pushing that to them, you're the final oversight as that comes through. But again, if you have committees, do that work. And all of a sudden, you're always questioning every piece that comes through them, the committee wants to know why they do the work. And, and so we want to be careful with that as well.
We had talked at one point about revisiting committees that are on the, I mean, that's one of the actions that we take at the reorganizational meeting. And some of those committees are active and some of those aren't. So in order to give Mr. Brownlow some direction for what to present at the next board meeting, let's have a little bit of discussion about, does the board have a desire to have a board representative? Does the board care to kind of follow the process that Mr. Brownlow just laid out? And maybe just revisit our committee structure and eliminate that committee? What direction would the board like to go?
I guess I'm fine with A through E. I don't think we need a board representative as long as there's a committee to oversee it, like you said. If we would have had that, we wouldn't, you know, it would have been, we wouldn't have had any issues in the last couple of months. But it, it does need to be a committee to oversee this. So I'd be perfectly fine without a board rep on it.
Other thoughts?
I would agree. I think what the, what the professionals do, board, bring it to the board.
So I think, Mr. Brownlow, at the next board meeting, we will need to dissolve the board's responsibility of having a designated board member on that committee per the reorganizational document. And then the board would also approve the process that you laid out.
Okay, sounds very good.
Any other comments or questions before I move on?
I think looking at all those committees, it'd be good that that's a January reorder.
Right. Very good. So we'll move on to number three, 2223 substitute pay for paraprofessionals, cooks, and custodians. Mr. Brownlow, I see that you supplied the board with a document for review, if you want to just walk us through?
Sure, yeah. I just wanted to find out how we were paying those folks. And the, kind of the general rule is it's on the step one of the salary in each agreement that we have with those folks in those classifications. And nobody could really say if it was board-approved or anything like that, so I thought it might best be to make you aware of that. And we would take care of that at the August 17th meeting. So I went through the agreements yesterday, and those seem to be the step-one rates for all those different groups. So I think that puts you in a very competitive market to find substitutes, but I think they're still going to be difficult to find. And you already approved the substitute teacher pay for the half-day, the full-day. One of the things that's, a few folks wanted me to clarify, just to make sure too, that if we have a licensed substitute teacher and we have a paraprofessional position open that day that we need to get filled, that if a teacher's willing to do it, we're going to pay them their teacher wage, we're going to use good common sense with that. But otherwise, that person's going to say, "Well, I just heard that Herman, Ashby, Morris, Alexandria, they have a teaching subs-" Because everybody's going to have those needs, and they're going to say, "I'm going to go there for that extra dollar, and then we're going to be in trouble there." So trying to put ourselves in a fiscally responsible place, but also knowing that we're going to need those folks to make sure that our kids are getting the best experience each and every day that they come to WCA school. So that's, I'm pretty sure I'm all-inclusive, but is there anybody that you see, Natalie, that I left off there? Because I know at first I talked to Mindy one night, she came in and I said, "Mindy, does the high school secretaries give substitutes?" She said, "No, we don't." And then all of a sudden, she called me on the way home, she goes, "But don't, I'm not speaking for the elementary secretaries." I said, "Okay, we better double-check that because that's only one person." But that's you then, right? And then one day that it came down, you were the school nurse secretary?
Or my mom. My mom, my mom was one.
Yeah, okay, so, so, yeah.
Is there, with the teacher shortage and trying to fill multiple different places and a lot of moving pieces, is there any benefit to having just a licensed substitute rate and an unlicensed substitute rate? That's consistent to fill these various positions? Is it kind of a headache to track all these different rates of pay and payroll?
I think when I went to Jessica, she already, because I asked her, I said, "Do you know what we're actually paying?" Because I got asked, folks, "Well, I'm pretty sure it's step one of their agreement." So I went to Jessica, she just puts the rate table in the, the pay system. So she went through and she goes, "Yep, those are the dollar amounts, they matched up with that piece there."
Yeah, go ahead.
Our substitute, hundred and out of time clock plus, they'll do the same thing with time tracker and they just, when they log in, when they go to clock in, they can choose whether they're something hourly, half-day teacher or full-day teacher. Those are the options they have.
Yeah, and I think that goes right to that, that when she puts those rate tables in, I mean, I think that's even for the officials, that not the contracted officials that Jake has, but any of our local officials that do the gate and things like that, that's already in there as well. And they can just check off to say, "Here's the, the role they served," and that's how they get paid, and we review that through payroll.
When you look at, there are shortages of teachers, we'll get somewhere, how much does this pay come into a lot? What are the issues that you're seeing?
I think there's not a lot of teacher, in teacher programs at all.
Period.
And so right now, it's, they have their, you know, whether, where they live, if months on, I haven't necessarily heard of it, it's because WCA doesn't pay pay as well. They just can choose anything because they're just, they're just the teachers. I mean, the fact that for some of the open positions, we got one applicant and the other ones we got two. And then, and that's, and then when we checked into the one applicant, not a good fit, and then we're back at zero. But just talking to different colleagues, other administrators around, they're in the same boat. So they're taking, you know, this one school, it was a husband and wife, I don't know what they did, they weren't teachers. They're coming into the school, going to be on tier ones, and they're going to put them in two different spots. And they're confident that they know who they are and they're going to be good people. That's really where we're at, whereas five years ago, we're like, "What program did you go through?" You look at all the different things in the resume, we're just not there. So I wouldn't necessarily, I've never heard from anyone that it's going to pay at WCA.
I would agree. I think, you know, I, I heard it from Morris, when I went there, you know, he was the secretary for around, I put, it was competitive. I mean, you had to have recommendations and you had to have, you know, good grades, a certain way, you pay a certain way. Morris graduated with elementary education majors last year. Well, when I was there, they graduated in forty, then there were spots more, and then people waited years, going back, it's just, they're just not- It's just, they're just not, there's some teachers later.
And then some that are been in the profession are just waiting, they've only been in it for five years and like, I'm just gonna go find something else to do. Hopefully some changes can come and we keep building up those teacher programs, so we can get to a spot again where you have three-year support of applicants and you get to choose which one is the best, that's just not where we're at right now. But we also want to put someone confident in front of our kids, too. We just don't want to pull someone out the street that we don't, sorry.
Nursing went through the same kind of pains twenty years ago when I went to nursing school. It was, I mean, at the state level, they had finally caught up to really advocating getting healthcare workers back in the field again. But um we're behind at the state level for encouraging teaching. So I hope that some of that messaging starts to come from the state level down and some support and encouragement for people to pursue that as a a career and would anticipate that we're gonna continue to see a shortage for quite a few years.
I figure it's gotta change. And I think for substitutes too, I mean, I know, you know, we chat about, you know, two-year degree or you're in the military, you can leave troops that you can't stand in front of. I mean, that's ridiculous, you know, but something has to change.
Is there any, I know obviously substitute, you're not committing to like a full, but is there any reason to hire like a, you know what I'm saying? Hire a substitute to have? But I mean, have we ever considered that and is that?
It was on the table and then it got taken off, and I'm not sure if I understand the background information there. But at one point, we had considered a full-time substitute teacher here at the secondary school.
Expense is one of those pieces, because you're typically getting into benefits and all those others. Because most of the times you're at a BS step one, we did do that um in Burndale. I know some other schools in our area did that, but you remember at that point you had S R money you could use. So a lot of schools did that because they knew there was gonna be a shortage. And so, and those people are always utilized. I don't think you ever get to a point where somebody's not there, and then you could say, guess what? You could also be a substitute paraprofessional, so there's always a need for them. But that, the expense does go up. But sometimes you just say, you know, I'll use a neighboring district uh up in in our, in my old area at Burndale. They could not find bus drivers for two weeks. So they now provide seventy-two hundred dollars in health insurance and a fifteen hundred dollar sign-on bonus. Burndale lost two and other districts are losing more because with the superintendent said, I'm just not going through this again. He said, here's what I'm doing, but what an extreme. I mean, that's eighty-five hundred dollars, you put that times fifteen people, that's a huge stress on your budget. And so how do you sustain that into the future is the other concern there as well. But but he also says radical times require radical measures, right? And I think that's what we're gonna have to look at as well as how do we get those folks here? It's gotta be a great working environment. I think sometimes it's the working environment is a huge piece. I think we're gonna have to be creative on how we look at some of our contracts as well. Do we have to allow remote work? You can't allow remote work for teaching, you know, because we're in a people business. But maybe some of our workshop days are remote and because other jobs are allowing that, you know, people are saying, hey, I can work remote now. I get to work from home and I can do this. And we're a little bit different too, because other places can mark productivity a different way as well, that you have this many meetings and it's all tracked as you're on your computer and and you have that opportunity to do that. But I think that's gonna be the pieces that we're gonna have to look at, say, one, how do we retain young talent? Uh, you know, or even recruit young talent, but then how do we keep them here? The rule of ninety is now gone, and I think that's scaring a lot of folks as well as, you know, do you want, and and I gotta be honest, student behavior? And sometimes the political pieces that we never thought were gonna happen in public education, we are government and employees. And that's starting to come out a little bit as well. You know, and I think some folks are just saying, hey, this is it, I need to be done, I'll find something different. And and we've always heard, right, that the the baby war bubble was gonna burst and and it's now burst. And so those folks aren't coming back, they've decided that they can fully retire, so they're doing that. And then they're finding, and people are now finding different positions. You may start public education, you may go into the private sector, you may go back to public education. They could have twelve jobs by the time they finally retire as well, because change sometimes is a healthy piece as well. So I think they have to commute as far, especially when you're seeing gas at four dollars and, you know, we're all excited, or we're not all excited, but seeing gas is now below four dollars, but that's still an expensive piece. If you can say, hey, I can stay home, that just gave me a five to a thousand dollar pay raise, that's the other piece there too, so.
What's the threshold for benefits? Is it point seven or is it a halftime? Halftime?
And there's no way to have it be, I was just trying to think, there's no way to contract versus employee, you know what I mean? I was just.
We talked about the the full-time, but it wouldn't, it doesn't, it doesn't fix the problem, because we have more than one every day, so.
But you have a guarantee that you'll at least have one sub that's in the building. So it it, you know, in some cases, and that's one of the reasons we had to change the master contract. We had teachers that like it, it was, they were giving up prep time to go sit in another teacher's classroom, because there was no sub.
You're just gonna have that one, you you do have that one guarantee, but I don't know, I guess it, you folks would be the best one to answer. How many times were you not able to get one sub at all?
In my past, every day that when I, my past, I was at, every day I started the day looking for someone to cover something and and we never filled them all.
But did you fill one? That's um.
Some days, no, no, some days, I mean, because they um it also, they just don't want to, because they don't have to. You know, whereas if you were in a full contract, I also, you know, we'd be able to find that person, because right now we can't even find.
Teacher, yeah, right.
But in that situation, I think sometimes people like it if they're just a sub, because they go, yeah, actually, I'm gonna take these three days off. I'm not gonna sub, but I will on Thursday and Friday, if you're hired full-time, then you're you're not gonna be out here every day.
I, that's what I was trying to figure out, is there, would there even be, you know, is there something beneficial to being a full-time sub versus? I I don't know that, that was just what I was like.
A halftime, like two half-times might be appealing to, it's typically substitute teachers don't want full-time work. Um, the other thing that I would say is, having been through this whole process, the school that called me the night before as a substitute teacher, because they knew that that was gonna be a vacant position the next day, was at an advantage over the school that received a call in the morning of from a teacher that couldn't come in. So it it, I could tell, most days I would get six to seven calls from the three districts I was subbing on on a daily basis, trying to fill vacant positions.
So it'd be hard to, is it harder to say, no, somebody calls you and asks you if you wanna sub versus having to get up and look at a computer and picking one?
It it. Yeah, I don't, I think it depends on the schedule and the person.
It's a lot harder to say, no, I know for me, it's a lot harder to say, no, somebody calls me and asks me if I wanna help with something.
Yeah.
The other stuff, they were, which we did is now, we used to allow, who's one of our substitute, like very similar process, who said she's a phenomenal sub. She has a source itself, she would go to the Alaska quite often because they paid for it. It was, you know, whatever, it was ten, fifteen more dollars a day or whatever, and she lives in between the two, so, you know, why not? You can just drive, but now that we've got pay, I'm hoping that, you know, we can keep it self-run, and she goes.
I think pay is.
We're competitive with the people pay around here.
Pay is a big thing, but the ultimate, the real issue at hand is the the size of the pool. And we can't forget about that, and we have to work as board members, as administrators, as even, even parents have to know the problem. And we, because it's a legislative issue, and that's the issue, is that we don't have enough in the pool.
Right.
And there's a way to fix it, and they're not fixing it.
Well, maybe we just need to encourage folks, we could maybe do that in the, is it the night? What's the one that comes out in the paper here? Maybe just tell folks, hey, if you're got a four-year degree, please get that short call sub, because we're gonna need help. I think Jake's even mentioned that for umpires and officials and gay people, we need help. If we're gonna provide these programs, we need everybody to step up and and do what they can.
Kids, or in front of rocks, if they just send that out, it's like an instant alert that all parents get. They've got, I've gotten it three times now over the course, you know, just letting people know, sometimes it's just a, oh, I guess I can do this. I have a four-year degree, go back and get that charcoal, or maybe it could be even dawned on them, but if they can get it, we just then have more people in the pool, whether they come to sub a lot or not, but some days it's just that one choice, but we could, yeah, put it somewhere that people are just going, ultimately, they have to choose to do it or not, but.
Because I said before, the problem's gonna get worse, because as a society, we're pushing for people to go into the service industries and two-year degrees. And I mean, we're doing it here at school, right? We're C D Ls, different things like that. Well, if we're pushing people to go into those professions, we're we're ultimately also pushing them out of the pool of of substitute teaching, because they won't have four-year degree, which is fine and dandy, but it's just a consequence of of an action. You know, in our business, and I'm sure in yours as well, you get letters that are, that you send to your legislators and superintendent sign on to the letter, because it's something that you all agree on. Maybe an idea would be for our district and other districts like us to, in the rural areas, to put together one of them letters and maybe parents and and business owners or whoever, you know, just community members could sign on to that letter and send it to our legislators to say, hey, it's not just us that are saying this, our parents are believing it too. Doesn't matter what side of the aisle you're on, this is an issue that you guys can get together on and help us fix.
I did ask that yesterday when I called Pels, because I said, hey, we need help. I said, we're getting to a point where I said, I never thought in all my years that would, FIED and social studies would be positions, you used to get a hundred and fifty applicants. And our one, elementary, when they came to you and they had a masters plus twenty years, you'd say, well, the highest we're gonna pay is a masters at five. And then they'd have to think if they wanted to come. Now they kind of come in, they can say, well, I'm actually a masters plus twenty, and I'd really like to go twenty-two. What are we, are we gonna be willing to talk? You know, so it's a whole different ballgame going into that, which isn't as much fun. But when I called her, she said, the reason why the legislature, because I said, if it's legislative action, I said, let's get to it. She goes, they won't, because as soon as they create, she said, you're not the only industry that needs flexibility. So she said, all the other industries are doing the same thing. So their fear is, is once they open it for one, it's a trickle-down effect. She said, we're just not sure where, the legislature doesn't know where it's gonna stop. I know, talking to Ron Creashen, some of those guys, they just said that people are at our doorstep every day saying, you gotta do this. And he said, it's from education to public health, to all those different pieces. And that's why they won't, because to me, it seemed like a simple fix as well, to say, just give us some flexibility. I thought it was the colleges or Pelsby, so I'm like, if it's the college that's holding this up, tell them that we got a shortage and they gotta help us figure it out. But uh, yeah, she she said, nope, it's actually the trickle-down effect of all the other industries that are also begging. I think nursing, healthcare, maybe even electrical line workers, all those different pieces. Everybody's asking to say, hey, we need flexibility, and they're just afraid that it would be, just help us out if you can, you don't need any license or anything like that. So she said, that's their greatest fear. And that made more sense to me than at that point, that, because I thought too, I thought, why is the legislature holding this up? This seems to be a simple fix, because is it out in Nevada? I think they're just, um, what is, I think, if you have a high school degree, a high school diploma, now you can come in and and sub, because that's the shortage where they're at as well.
Which is totally fine, if 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 I'm fine with a high school, someone with a high school diploma coming in and teaching, as long as they say they're qualified.
Right.
So to me, that's not, that really is an excuse. If if they come in and Natalie or Jessica says, you know what, they're good at it. You know, there's a lot of people with four-year degrees ain't good at anything.
That's right, yeah.
So that, to me, you know, my answer to the person's question is, if it's right, it's right. Doesn't matter what door opens.
The other issue in our, in our area is that South Dakota doesn't require anything. And I think North Dakota is a two-year degree or a distance certificate that you have to get. So we're right, we're right on the border and and there's two states next to us that don't have the same requirement we have, so.
It's not a a bad idea, to your point, Darren, for board members to reach out to MSBA either. They're kind of our sounding board for discussions that are had um about school board struggles at the the state capital level. So I would encourage our board members to, not bad to put an email in there either.
It affects the kids, the bottom line affects the kids, because they can't get reading intervention, if they can't get math intervention, if they can't get FIED, if they can't get music because of these shortages, this is who it's affecting, you know, and they have, and they have to know that.
So Mr. Brownlow, the substitute rate of pay that you presented to us, this is information only, correct?
My understanding was this was just all discussion that I bring all to the business meeting on the seventeenth of August.
Is this a change from where we're at?
Just making codifying it, so we know for sure, so that's not a change.
Having it listed, yeah, so just accepting it, so it's lit, it's documented, so to speak.
I think the general rule is realize that it was salary step one, but it wasn't really, I didn't know if the board was aware of that. So I just want to make sure that it's, you know, I think then at the August meeting, we probably look at the officials piece there, say, here's all of our pay for the upcoming year when it comes to any of our um officials or any of those casual employees, casual subs and things like that. So you're aware of that piece.
Good discussion. Any other questions or comments from the board about the substitute rates of pay that Mr. Brownlow will present to the board at the business meeting?
The only other thing that I would mention, I know you've already taken care of the substitute teachers. One of the things that we instituted, because our best substitutes in um our district or in Burndale was retirees. You could get them to come back, and they knew coming in exactly what needed to happen. So we gave them a pay differential, because one, that's who we could count on all the time to say, we are in a, between a rock and a hard place. Okay, I'll call my other obligation and I'll come in, because they still have the commitment and passion for the kids, right? I mean, those are still their kids. And so they would come in, and the differential, I think, was maybe five dollars or ten dollars but per day. But they just felt like, there's some appreciation here, okay, you guys do recognize that we did that. And the other thing is our teachers appreciated that we're onsite, because then they could, they still had sub plans, but it was a lot easier to write those sub plans, when you knew, oh, Artith Carr's coming in and she's gonna sub for me today, she gets what's gonna happen. They know the kids, so the behavior management situation is a lot different as well. So that might be one other piece, and I don't know how many, I mean, well, with the Mary Suckstore, right? That might help there, just to have that differential, and that's an easy one to to justify, I believe, as well. Um, and if they're retired, oftentimes you're not paying the T R A sometimes on that, you know, the other ones you could be paying T R A. But if they're retired, then you're not paying the T R A.
I think that's a good idea to consider that, because I think we have a lot of those in our district. And I think that that would be a good way to pull them towards us if they're doing it.
Okay, I will add that.
I agree. Okay, let's move on to the last item on our agenda, twenty-two, twenty-three district goals, and Mr. Brownlow, I'll let you lead this discussion as well.
I did bring my document with, so do you have it? Is it in the file here, Chrissy? I should have it right off the top of my head, right? Everybody's probably going, how does he, he tells me their district goals, he hasn't ever memorized. The first one is student achievement, and so we just wanna optimize that for every student in our building, from those who are um.
Oh, I need to go back a little bit, sorry.
Perfect. I know, I was like, okay, while you guys are discussing, do I quickly sneak out? So, you know, optimizing student achievement, so looking everything from special education to enrichment. Um, C T E was a loud message that came through when I did the board member interviews there a little bit, getting to know you and you getting to know me was the C T E piece. And then of course, college and career readiness, that's our eventual goal, right? Is to make sure that every student that leaves our building can function out in in the work world and in things like that. So special education, just making sure, um, I think sometimes we in in education can have a really good resume, but what impact does it have on kids? And so I think looking at our impact that we're having with all of our kids, especially intervention, we provide intervention. Uh, to me, I kind of consider that like the the um, when you go get a antibiotic from a doctor, right? They want to see progress, they want to see that you're getting healthier. We want that for our interventions as well, and so I think we would manage that. I'll sit down with our our principals, just to make sure that we're seeing that we're having that impact with special education. But then at the same point, we don't want to neglect those students who are doing really well. We don't want them to be bored in the classroom, and so that should probably show up through some M C As and some other pieces there too that we can can find. And so we'll have a meeting here this week to kind of review those pieces, so the principals can say, here's how we're gonna be able to measure that, and here's what we're gonna do to strive, here's our goal to strive to move forward on that. And then C T E, I gotta tell you, just hearing about the greenhouse and all the other pieces that are going on is remarkable. Um, you know, with all the things to see what's being built, what a, we have a lot of kids are gonna be a leader, they're gonna be able to be gainfully employed. I think even just leaving here, you know, with those skill sets and and pieces there. And so I think just making sure that those programs, I think that was the biggest thing I heard, we don't want to lose programs. And so to make sure that we can maintain those at a high level, not just maintaining, but at a high level there. And then I think there's some different ways that we can review college and career readiness. Um, when I was at uh Burndale, they were starting to work on a report card for that. And so I'm still staying plugged in there with the the superintendent that replaced me, because she was on the committee, but I want to see how they do that. And that's not necessarily for each individual student, but that's a report card for us as a district to say, are we getting our kids? So when they go off to college, are they ready for college English? Or do we have a lot of kids that are taking remedial courses and aren't ready to go, or can they present themselves? That's always something I think, you know, kids who can present themselves don't necessarily have to be the best students in school. But if they can present really well, you know, they're gonna do very fine there too. So I think looking at those pieces there, so we'll bring some measures, you know, I, here's what we have right now as goals that I'd like to share with the staff as we move forward in our district meeting. But I'll sit down with our admin team, say, okay, how do we measure this, so we can make sure, um, you know, that this is working? I think that's sometimes the difference between public education, and here I am picking on, not, I'll pick on myself, maybe it's Paul Brownlow, but the idea of how do we measure? And that was my board chair in Burndale was always, how do we measure this? What is the impact? It all sounds really good, but in the end, as a board, we need to know that it's working. And so we always had to sit down, review that, to say that we've got a lottery list of things we're doing, we spend a lot of money on it, but in the end, did it have any impact or did we just, does it sound really good on the brochure? And so we want to work on that piece, so we can have that impact. Um, addressing, so managing school district budget and facilities, um, looking at our school district budget, that's one of the pieces that we'll need to review fairly tight, just to. need to review fairly tight, just to see where we're at. So people know where they sit with their budgets. And then also allowing them to maintain their budgets. I guess I'm gonna tell you, I treat the school district budget like my own paycheck. And I'm very, um, you know, I want to make sure that we're handling public funds on the right piece because our constituents, we have to ask them to help support the district. We want to make sure that we're taking care of those pieces. And so I watch that very closely, as well as letting people know that it all comes from one pot of money. There's not separate pots. So I sometimes know people will say, well, it comes out of this restricted fund. They didn't give us additional money for that. That's just where we gotta work through it, but it's restricted to make sure it gets spent there. So we'll want to review those pieces to make sure that things are moving forward in the right direction. We're already having some challenges as there a little bit. Um, as we're getting calls from vendors saying, uh, well, shipping charges have now increased. So we had one bill that came up because the price increased from the time of purchase till now, plus shipping to the tune of five thousand dollars. And so that's where it's at. The hard part is some of these vendors will say, there is not a fixed price. You'll say, okay, what's the fixed price if we, if we contract it now? Nope, it's based on delivery. The day you get it will be the price we'll give you. And so I think we all about fell over in the office when we heard five thousand dollars, you know, it's gonna be for some furniture. It's like, wow, what in the world? But they got you too. Otherwise, you don't get it. I mean, that's the whole piece. They either, you're gonna wait. Roofing's a, a prime example where they'll tell you, once it's delivered, that's when we'll give you that final price. So we need to really be prepared for that as we work forward there. And then addressing our facility needs. I mean, we know that that's gonna be the big one, right, as we look forward. And those, to me, are hand in hand, right? If we've got money in facility, because we've got an aging boiler is, is, that's why I had Diane come to the meeting yesterday. Chad said, well, unfortunately, we have two elements in the south boiler. You guys just replaced those last year. They are already not working. And so I'm going to follow up to make sure that there's not warranty coverage that should be taken care of to kind of hold them to the fire just a little bit, literally. Um, and, uh, do that and, um, and just make sure, okay, we have these pieces here. But with those aging facilities, of course, you've got more money, right? I use the analogy of kind of the car. You gotta finally make that decision of, I don't have any car payments, but I'm taking the car in for quite a few repairs. And so we gotta look at those pieces of how we're going to, to move forward there because the other message that came loud and clear from the board was, we need to maintain programs. And so we gotta identify those priorities to say, okay, where do our priorities fit with programs, facilities, all those pieces. And then you throw staffing in there as well to maintain those programs. That's gonna be quite a challenge, but we need to move forward on that just to make sure that all three buildings, you know, at this current time are ready to go for all of our kids. We need to have adequate learning spaces for all of our students. That's the responsibility of the board and responsibility of the superintendent is to make sure that when our kids come in, these are the basic things that you're gonna get regardless if you go to, um, if you're gonna go to South, North, or the secondary school. Just because the superintendent's office happens to be in Barrett doesn't mean that that's gonna be the premier space. We need to make sure that all those facilities have those basic pieces that are taken care of. And so we want to work through those as well. Recruiting and retaining effective staff. Um, I had to change that. We used to say high performing staff, and then I had people challenge me on that a little bit. They go, so are we a high performer or a low performer? And I said, well, you only know, you know, everybody kind of knows that. But retaining that effective staff to make sure that we have the right people in the right places. And that's gonna be more challenging as we know that people can love to say, you know, and I could go over here, I found out that in this district, it'll be a five thousand dollar pay raise, or the benefits are better, or they have this, or they have this flexibility. And so working on that. So we want to make sure recruit, we recruit. But then how do we retain those people that are doing really good work? And that was the other message that was loud and clear from our board was the fact that we have great people. That's all I continue to hear is the great people we have here. So, um, and I know that from my time back as being a teacher here, it's really great people. And just seeing the impact that really great people have, uh, students, right? As I see several of your students have come back to be teachers. So to me, that's where the impact is really measured to say, hey, our people are doing great work because these kids leave here wanting to go into a profession that is teaching. And so I think that speaks volumes there as well. So really working those different pieces, we're gonna have to be creative. So you may hear some wild ideas. If I say, hey, I think we've gotta do this. At first, it may take you a while because it takes me a long time too. When people first come in, oftentimes I say, no, I gotta say no. Give me time to think about it. Normally, it takes two days to come back and say, okay, I thought about it more. I can wrap my head around it. Let's keep talking and, and doing that. And then engaging and promoting our WCA community. I think making sure that with all the great things we have going on, how do we get that out so everybody's aware of that as well? You know, in school, sometimes I don't think we always do a great job of promoting or communicating. And so we want to make sure that we communicate those pieces out so families know, here's what's going on. And not only the families that are engaged in schools, we have to remember that it's our retirees and our senior population that needs to be here to support as well. And so they, once they see those pieces, they're gonna be very supportive moving forward. So we want to do that. Um, and then just kind of that community feel, right? That's the other thing too that I hear is, boy, all five communities, it's just a great community feel. If we need something, they're there. As Jake talks to me about corporate sponsors where they're generating that revenue there to support things for our kids. It's also a remarkable piece there too. So those are the pieces that I would like to share out with our staff and move forward on. Like I said, meet, sitting down with admin team to say, okay, how do we attack this? How do we best do this? One of the things that I'm planning to do, I think I shared this already once, but I want to be in all the communities, um, in all of our buildings on a weekly basis. So I have that high aspiration to start with, but I want to make sure that if there's anybody down at South in the, in the school building, that they have an opportunity to, to visit with me. I want to be in their classrooms. But at the same point, if there's anybody in the community, I'm planning to be someplace in the community one time per week as well, where they can come in and say, hey, we heard this was going on. We need more information. Perfect. Let's sit down, let's talk about it. And I think that communication piece is vitally important. Um, and I think sometimes we think we over communicate. I oftentimes think I over communicate and then people will say, we didn't hear about this. When did this happen? And they go, oh, that's right. That didn't necessarily get put out the message that I thought it was going to be put out there. So doing that, getting into both buildings to get to know the kids, to get to know the staff, but also to get to know our communities as well, would be that piece. And then just sharing that positive message there as well. I don't know if I'll wear the night mascot costume every time I go out there, but we'll try to make sure that we're outdoing those pieces.
Not when it's ninety degrees.
Yeah, no, I was in my attic. I've also realized that you only have impact in areas that you're good at. I thought I could maybe do home improvements. And I tell you what, if my wife and I are still, she's still married to me, I should say. She's very patient and kind, but if she's still, so I need to take prep these, uh, classes here because I get in there. So last night I was up in the attic trying to fix, just put the, the ductwork on the fan. I think I lost ten pounds of water. I retained it all when I got out of there, but yeah, what a mess. And so I told my wife, I said, I am not Chip Gaines. We cannot continue to do this. She goes, I keep telling you, let's just pay people to do it. I go, I know, but it's expensive, so we gotta save money. So it's on both sides of that. So she said, well, you need to make a decision and stick with it. And I haven't made that yet. So anything that you can think of, if we go through each individual goal, optimizing student achievement, are there particular pieces where you say, here's one of those areas that I really want you to focus on or sit down with the admin team? And maybe I should open it up too, is with our admin team as well to say, Paul, we've got this all under control. Don't worry, our test scores are at ninety-eight point two percent and we've got this. But I gotta tell you, it's more than test scores. And I remember sitting in a conversation years ago here where there was talk about weighted grades. And there's a teacher who's still here and he said, if we're gonna engage in that, he said, I'm gonna tell you, my classes are probably more difficult than some of the other classes that you're gonna consider waiting when it comes to math classes and English classes. He said, and when those kids walk out of my room, he said, they're gonna learn a lot. And he said, if you're gonna think about waiting a math class over my class, he said, I think that's unfortunate, unfair. And I would kind of agree with that. I think we have kids that go into the arts that do very well. If that's where their strength and their passion is, then I think we need to help support them in those pieces there. But so it's not gonna be just test scores. So I don't want people to leave to say, okay, he's gonna bring all these great test scores. Because that's not our whole student. Our whole student incorporates so many different pieces, you know, that way as well. And we, our job is to really help them find those pieces before they leave here to say, and then to support them as well. I mean, if they say, hey, I'm gonna go onto this occupation, you know, and, and to make sure that we support them, what tools can we give them to be successful? We want to do that. But anything on student achievement that you'd like to really have honed in upon, focused on, anything that way?
I think the only piece that I didn't hear you mention, which I, I think we're gonna continue to need with tier one and tier two licensed teachers, um, a continual need for substitute teachers, but that instructional leadership piece or instructional mentorship. I think it's gonna continue to be a really big piece of the puzzle. Um, as we have people that come in and they start subbing or they're teaching in the classroom and they just don't have um, that background, having someone to support them through that, I think is gonna be really key.
Is that part of like recruiting and retaining, you think?
Uh, I, yeah, I think it could overlap into both. I mean, without support, sometimes there's frustration, right? And then it's a, I don't know why I'm doing this and maybe I'll go do this other thing. So it, I definitely think the two would work hand in hand. Um, but just even to ensure that we've got high quality learning environments at all times, regardless of who's, who's kind of in charge of that classroom, so to speak, was the big one that came to my mind.
One of the things that came to my mind, and you kind of talked about it, and they were looking at it in Burndale way, it's hardly been with, is the way to measure, whether it's exit interviews or contacting some of our students a year, a year or two after they leave here is, you know, were they ready for college? Were they ready for life? Were they ready for the things that they see when they, when they leave this building? And if yes, great, you know, what did, you know, just ask them, why, why do you think you were ready? And, and the ones that weren't ready, why, why weren't you ready? So that we can make adjustments as they move through our buildings to get them ready for when they leave. And it's not just college, you know, it's just, were they ready for life? Were they ready for what they seen when they left this building? Were they, were they ready when they got their first real job, you know?
How do you collect that information? Like?
Uh, if you, if you randomly contact, if we graduate fifty and you randomly contact twenty-five or twenty.
Do we say, is that something we've ever done?
And someone won't participate in that, right? So if you contact twenty-five, you might get five people that'll participate in some type of a survey.
Right.
Or, and you know, the, the survey has to be in a, in a way that they're, it's kind of not like yes and no answers, but where they actually have to come up with a, their own reasoning. So you can kind of get something out of it, you know, instead of just, were you ready? Yes or no, or? Trying to figure out how to measure that. It's, it's not easy. I'm sure it's not easy, but you know, it, it'll definitely, can't hurt.
Wonder if Mr. Wood could help with that a little bit too. Sometimes just that personal call. So maybe it's not just Mr. Wood, but maybe it's a few of us that call. Or maybe there's a teacher that says, hey, that student was in my, maybe Mr. Cruft says that kid was in my shop class all the time. I'm more than willing to reach out and, and give them just a quick call. Here's the things that they were ready for, but here's the things that they felt like they were lacking and things that way. Because there are some, some boxed surveys that you can put out, but I think you're right. When kids see those, oftentimes it's just in the trash and you gotta make sure you get it to the right person. So it's sometimes finding out contact information. I know one of the other cool things sometimes is to have those kids come back, right? After they go off to school or they get that job to say, guess what? A WCA graduate is now a physician's assistant, or a WCA graduate is a veterinarian, or WCA, um, is a, because I think some of these kids too, when they hear what a lineman makes, when they hear what a construction manager makes, when they hear those jobs are like, wow, I didn't know they, and that's sometimes all it takes to say, you know what? Or, and then might even be the idea, if you're not a very good math student, you need to probably be good math in some of those fields. And so here's what you need to take. And sometimes having them come back to say, here's what I aspire to be. And, and I think our kids in the high school need to realize that they're some of our greatest mentors for our younger students. Because they're looking up to them all the time, right? I mean, our football players, when they come off the field and they take their helmet off, a lot of the younger kids, eventually that's what they want to do. They want to be down at, at the US Bank Stadium doing the exact same thing. Or if they see somebody who built something great in the shop class and say, I want to be able to put together, um, well, I got that building out there. That's my understanding. My, as I go out to tips and mounds, I think these, I was gonna look to haul that to my place because it'd be a lot easier to build.
They're, they're, uh, they're gonna try to sell it first, but if it doesn't, that's for a whole lot of them.
Well, I'm gonna have to look into that. That's right, yeah. For just myself, my wife will probably have the house. She may say, here's your place to go to.
No projects required, that'll come furnished.
CTE, what do we want to do there for, I mean, we've got great programs. We've got Mr. Swatki doing amazing pieces, as does Mr. Johnson as well with all of his pieces. And of course, Mr. Cruft and in art. But is there anything there that you would say that we'd want to look at in particular with CTE stuff?
I think we just need to continue to support it and just make sure that, you know, we, we don't let it fall, you know? That's, I think that's just that we built, we've built these different programs and, and they're still growing. So to keep them that way and not.
Because I think that's directly related to number two, the budget and finance and making sure that we've got some stability there to support. I would hesitate to take on any significant new ventures until we have.
Right. Right. I think it's just supporting what we have.
Yeah.
Okay.
Aligning our current priorities and that'll be.
Okay.
Anything from the admin team that you look at here and say, we've tried this or anything like that? Diane, you'll have the budget all managed and maintained and ready to go? What are our staff looking for, do you think? I mean, when they see this, I'm sure it's gonna be, well, this is what we always choose to achieve, but any ideas from staff that would be a priority for them?
The, the one that comes to, I mean, Eric's got the greenhouse top of mind right now and meat processing and vegetable processing and, I've got to sneeze, excuse me. Um, but I think that's a program that is front and center on everybody's mind.
C facility stuff is gonna be at the top of mind for some of these, you know, especially in the older buildings that. Yeah, I mean, we've been trying to address it for years. So I mean, that's.
When you say technology, like, do you have any sort of sense of what kind of technology you would hope to have someday?
You know, right now they're working on, they just started working with the coding.
Yep.
To get the kids. And then even architect, I'm watching them code, it was just fascinating. Of course, I know they don't have a routine. But, um, they were just, it was just fascinating. And we purchased like the B-bots and the little things like that, you know, for the older, the older kids to, to work on some of those things. I think part of the issue is that technology is growing so fast that we just don't even know. You know, in a year, it would be so different than what we're looking at now. It's just hard to predict. But just making sure that, and Kevin does a great job of keeping it, you know, pretty up to date on what's, what's going on with kids. But I know that, you know, we still have the computer labs and we still have the iPad's and we still have the Chromebooks. I know we're short. Fifty Chromebooks for our, for our third grade classes. But even just making sure that they have access to all of that stuff. And I think we we just, we need to continue to figure out.
I think we talked a little bit about, uh, this over the last year, that you mentioned it too, how we're, uh, going to this e-learning and because people are working remotely, they want more flexibility, right? How do you attract the people? We talked a lot about like digital citizenship and I don't know, we get felt like that, we didn't get real far down the path. But you know, I mean, this is a huge tool, right? And what are we doing to help kids understand and utilize, you know, the technology? I don't know how many elementary kids even have a phone in their head. With your group, probably, probably more. And so, you know, so how do you, how do we, you know, rather than, you know, the classes need theories to have, they're about the same age as, how do you count money, right? And now, do they know how to use Venmo to save money? You know, are we integrating some of those pieces as we think about, you know, for the future, right? You know, with what we're doing to work proactive in that.
I think you sparked a thought in my head about the technology piece and then going back to that high quality instructional piece, you know, having, having high quality instruction even on e-learning days. Some teachers are going to be strong technology wise and figuring out those engagement strategies that get kids to engage with them, even though they're not sitting in front of you. And other teachers might need more support in that area. So making sure that we've got the, the tools and the support in place to help every teacher have a great e-learning experience, I think would be a big one.
And I think it gets down to me too, a little bit, Paul, is the how and why. I really like that idea because like Sarah mentioned, the facilities are definitely top of mind and how that integrates and our teaching, our ability to provide an adequate learning environment for all students. And so it's the how do we get there? Why do we get there? You know, how does that all work within the budget? How do we measure it, right?
Yep.
I think that's what this group is responsible for. And how do we get there as a team, you know, we need to all participate. So if you can start laying that out and we can.
Sure.
Support them.
Okay, that sounds good. Yeah, because I think, you know, unfortunately, that's becoming one of those pieces too of retaining talent. I mean, that's quite honestly why we in Burndale look to add indoor air quality, which ends up being air conditioning. Because all of our neighbors have that. And so when we say, when I would not close school because we, I felt learning in the building is so valuable. And also they would say, but you won't close, but we're gonna be in here teaching in September when the temperature could be ninety-five degrees. You're okay in your office because it's air conditioned. But we come down to the elementary, well, we're not. That's the other piece too that we have to be prepared for, right? And that's gonna retain staff because more and more buildings are looking at that piece. Do I think it's absolutely necessary? I don't believe so because we don't have those warm months, but seems like we start a little cool, but September is still awfully warm. And that's, it's tough to, to, we've become accustomed to that, right? I mean, homes, cars, you know, twenty years ago, you went to the basement if you got hot because you never air conditioned, your car didn't have air conditioning, you rolled down windows, but right away you get hot. Well, like last night, I'm sure it wasn't that bad, but I was miserable. And so, you know, how do you do those pieces there? Just to make sure that that learning and working environment is going to be adequate. Where people don't say, well, quite honestly, it was nothing to do with pay, but I can go into a building here where I feel like they've taken care of these needs that they have, you know, for my students. but I can go into a building here where I feel like they've taken care of these needs that they have, you know, for my students and myself. I think on Natalie, on that technology piece, I think the critical component there is also the support. I think sometimes we get, um, some of those STEM ideas and projects when it sounds really good, you get it. And then you just give it to the teacher and say, hey, I've got these really great things. Here you go. And I'm like, okay, well, I haven't had time to look at. So you need some of that support beyond that with somebody else taking the time to say, hey, we're going to do those B-bots or we're going to do 3D printing. And I think we'd be able to utilize some of our, um, ESSER funds, the learning loss. Uh, I know one of the neighbors to the north of us in Burn Dale, they spent a lot of money. I think like every grade level got a 3D printer in the elementary. And that's what they use those dollars for. But then they also had the support afterwards for somebody to come in and say, because certain teachers, when they see that, they're like, I have no idea. So guess what stays in the plastic behind there? So the kids can't even see it, right? They don't want them to see it because kids are inquisitive. They want to know what's going on. They're excited about pure pressure takes care of that in itself because all of a sudden Mrs. Johnson's class is able to do it. Why don't we get to build those cool things that they've got around their necks? Well, nobody told me what we were doing. I'm not exactly sure what we're doing. And so I think that's going to be the other, other critical components, making sure that that job embedded support is there as well. Cause I think we can come up with a lot of great ideas, but then how do you make sure that those folks know how to implement that moving forward? So I think there would be some great pieces there. But again, that's making sure that when our kids leave here, if they want to go into engineering, that when they see that 3D printer for the first time at NDSU, they're not going, this is the first time I've ever seen this. Where the other kids are going to say, oh no, this is old hat. I've done this all the way through. We've got to do this in the fifth grade on up. So yeah, you just start this, do that. Well, that kind of changes your career path, right? If you go ahead and you feel like you're, unless you're really ambitious about it, but then you kind of go, I'm not sure if I'm in the right ballpark here. I think I might have to go someplace else. And so we just want to make sure that our kids have access to those pieces as well.
Uh, Mr. Brownlow, would you, do you want to continue going through those items? Do you want the board to provide you feedback outside of the meeting? Maybe once they've digested them? Do you want to revisit them at the next board meeting?
I'd like to, so I'd like to do final approval at the next board meeting. Um, and then so I can share those with the staff at their opening day, um, piece there. So I've got a theme that I'm still working through that I'll get put, because my understanding is if my letter doesn't go out about back to school stuff this week, Flock Fest, I'll be, um, have all kinds of questions coming my way. Are we actually coming back? What are we doing? So I want to make sure that that's out there. So we'll do that, but we'll have a theme, but then I'd like to share these goals, say, here's how we're going to address these goals as we move forward. Here's where I need you as a staff member to help us achieve these goals.
What would you like from the board?
So if you have any feedback after this to say, hey, I thought about this point more or you forgot one point, I will say that four goals is a, is a pretty healthy.
I was going to say, this seems like a lot. That would be my only.
Yep. So, so yeah, so I, I don't know if I'm looking for 12 more goals because then I might not be able to get those all the, again, looks really good on the resume, right? But if you can't achieve it, you know, it'll just be in the brochure, but it won't mean anything. But yeah, there's a certain spot where you say, hey, here's a special education piece that I think we need to, to look at. Or here's enrichment. We haven't taken care of these pieces. Or maybe it is some of the talk about the job embedded professional development. And then I'll sit down with the admin team as well to say, okay, how do we look to, to refine these to make sure that we can make it happen? So when I come back to you in, in January, we can say, here's our progress. Here's what we're doing. Here's how we're moving forward. And it's either going to be, Paul, you're not getting it done. You talked a really good game in August, but it's not happening. And I want that honest feedback too. If you feel like something's not happening, I'd much rather have you tell me than share it all amongst the community. And then I find out from somebody else to say, yeah, well, so also it says you're not even getting it done. Come directly to me and we'll talk about it. We'll get it figured out and, and make sure, because I'm here to learn and grow as well. Learning and growing never stops. And so if you've got pieces there, if you hear something from somebody, let me know. So we can take care of it and, and improve.
Uh, I would just answer one question, you know, just be, you know, some of these look to be fairly long-term goals. And how, how do you measure them? You know, is January going to be enough time for you to say, I, I was affected at a couple of these goals. So I, that would be my question is what are the, what are the short term or the long term? You know, how do you, how do you judge it? Like you said, why do you measure that? How can I say that you have, uh, engaged the community in January? Or how do I say that you have retained and recruited, you know, talented staff? How, how are you going to measure that in January? How are you going to measure it next year? You know? What are those things going to look like? Because it, it looks to be somewhat long-term on your goals. And so I don't want to get frustrated in January because you, you don't think there's any progress, but yet it's not, it's not attainable in January.
And I would say to your point, Maya, so appropriately so, these are, uh, school district goals, correct? So would it be correct to say that there will be an iteration of superintendent goals? That's maybe that, um, shining star for the, the board to be able to complete superintendent evaluation?
Sure.
I think that's what, yeah, I think that's what Maya's getting at is if, if these are our, our district goals, what do we have a superintendent goal specific, specifically so we can measure? I think that that's the issue is we've had situations where we need to be able to measure it. How are, how are we going to measure this goal if we can't measure it? So.
Yeah, no, I think mine will be similar to that to say, well, I think the community engagement would be that I'm out in the community to say, hey, I'm going to be in these places. So I'm telling you hopefully that I'm there in each community, you know, once per week so that I can give you a feedback to say, and I might even have the, the community fill out a survey to say, hey, I went with this group and they can say, yeah, we're seeing him here. He's responsive to our questions and things like that. I think would be the one piece there. Yeah. The recruiting and retaining effective staff. I think that's going to be an ongoing piece. Probably it'd have to be some staff surveys there as well that I could say, how are the first, you know, four months of the school you're going? What do you feel like? What things can we do differently? Getting that back. Some of them might just be spot checks, but I agree. I got to clarify that more so you can see. So some of them aren't going to be completed, but spot checks where if I come back to you and you say, have you been outside of the district office or the only place that you know how to get to is 301 County Road two? And I say, yeah, that's the only place I've been to so far. That's going to be able to say, okay, you told us you were going to do this. That's what we told you during the interview process. That's what the community's mentioned. We need you to get out there and get that done, I think would be the piece there. On the special education, I think that's going to be ongoing, um, or the, the optimizing student achievement. That's going to be the harder one. But I again, think that MCA test scores, some of our intervention pieces, um, and things like that would take care of that. And then school district budget facilities, I think the first thing is hopefully Diane will be able to report back to say, we've got a structure and a system now in place where department heads are telling us, here's where their budget is. Cause sometimes I'm now receiving requests that are saying, hey, will you approve this $130 expenditure? And my first question Diane will say, isn't this part of their budget where they know that they, how to manage? That they take care of this and it must not be there. And so I want to get that cleaned up. So when they come in next April or even February, March, where I say, okay, tell us what all your technology needs. Our athletic director, our activities director, what do you need? They have that, they're responsible to that piece. So they're not having to come in for every $130 that I have to, if I don't review the email and get it back right away, there, I'm still in limbo. Are you going to approve that? Well, it's a hundred and thirty bucks. Don't you have a $15,000 budget that you're just taking care of? You know, if you need chargers and you come in and you say, hey, we're, we're short 27 chargers. Can we have to address that? Because if we don't have budget left, why don't we have chargers? You know, are the kids not taking care of it? And, and things like that would be the other pieces that have some accountability on the other side as well to say, here's the dollars that I get. Here's what I'm going to work in. I think, um, Natalie and Jessica have their budgets for staff budgets. And there's some things that I would like to do differently, but I also made the promise when I sat in the interview process that I wasn't going to come in and change everything right away where people go, he doesn't think we know how to do anything here. It's only his way or the highway. And I don't want that, but how do we do it here to work? So Jessica's probably going, well, so far that's what it seemed like.
So I think to Maya's point about what is it that the, the board's measuring? Number one and three is more so working with the principals.
Yep.
To execute those. And then the board's measurement would be, are those meetings happening? What are you using to measure the success of those meetings? What, what goals or what markers are you using to set your sights on, um, where you want to go? Versus two and four is something that the, um, school board will hold you responsible for.
Yep.
That sounded more aggressive than I meant it to.
No, that's good. That's, I like that.
Where you would be specific about what it is about the budget that you want to address, what it is, uh, how many, you know, for example, I, uh, my goal is to be in all three of our buildings once a week, that kind of, um, direction. But I think, you know, number one and three specifically, uh, from a board management standpoint, we're looking to see that you're working with your building principals, um, to get to those goals.
That's.
Not necessarily that you, Mr. Brownlow, increased our math scores 10%, right?
We're hoping, but.
Good discussion. Any other comments or questions before we close up for today? Oh, seeing as none of us, our motion to adjourn. And a second roll call vote, starting with Christensen, Gross, Nesbitt, Sibolic, Strunk.
Yes.
And all right.
He's like, come on.